I'm gonna go ahead and open it up. Okay. Welcome to Litchfield Park, to the Board of Adjustment regular meeting. We are opening the meeting now. Folks in the back, we're opening the meeting like five minutes ago. Anyway, will we all join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, ever and just as well. Okay, first order of business is approval of the August 3rd, 2023. This is correct, August 3rd, 2023?
Chair, yes, that's the last time the Board of Adjustment has met.
Okay, so, all right, we need to approve the minutes from that meeting. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
A second.
A motion on second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, passes. Yeah, moving on now, our next item is public hearing. The 2431 rear wall variance request at 514 North Old Litchfield Road. And I'm sure you're gonna be presenting, is that correct?
Chair, yes, this is a two-parter. We'll have item B here, which is the public hearing. I'll have a presentation to show. Welcome to speak on the item as well. We'll take any public comments, then we'll go to item C, and we'll there'll be a recommendation and motion.
Okay.
So, thank you. This is a public hearing for variance request. It is to construct a solid wall along the pathway system. As you may recall, at our last design review board meeting last month, the applicant was granted approval of the design of the wall. All new walls require DRB approval. And subject to that approval was the ability to obtain a variance through the Board of Adjustment in order to make a solid wall along the pathway. The requirements for that view fence, which is what this variance is requesting to stray or vary from, has been in place since 2007. And as discussed, for the good of the order for Board of Adjustment, there's only been one other house that's been constructed since that change in 2007. That house did have the view fence requirement that Section 30 does require. All the other houses along this section of the pathway have been there since prior to this change in 2007, and generally do have those solid walls along the pathway system. State law, along with our zoning code, has four requirements that must be met in order to grant the variance. As part of your packets sent to you, the applicant has provided responses to those four questions for this meeting. I'll read those out loud. Number one, that there are special circumstances or conditions applying to the land building or use referred to in the application, which is not applied to other properties in the district. In this case, we're talking about the land itself. This isn't a use variance or a building variance. This is simply a use of the land itself. And in that regard, all the other properties, as mentioned, except for the new one, have had solid walls. Two, the sudden special circumstances were not created by the owner or applicant. This is not self-imposed. The wall has not been constructed. We are doing this in the correct order and getting the variance for the variance required per se. Number three, the authorizing of the variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of substantial property rights. This was discussed in last month's meeting and as well in the response provided by the applicant, just regarding, you know, having a private area for their enjoyment of land. I believe there were dogs mentioned as well, but I'll let Michelle talk about dogs. Number four, the authorizing of the application will not be material detrimental to persons residing or working in the vicinity and to adjacent property to the neighborhood or its public welfare in general. As mentioned, it's an existing condition on all parts of the pathway, except for this house, and I believe the one next door. We do not believe that this is different or unique or more impactful than the existing conditions that surround it. For our analysis, we do support this variance request as stated and as presented or prepared by the applicant. The solid wall does match the majority of the surrounding area and creates yard space for the applicant to enjoy. We have only received one public comment. We do notice in the newspaper, there's a sign in front of the property and as well as around parts of the city that would do these sort of public notifications. It was regarding the status of some trees in the backyard. This is part of your package as well. They just, the residents' neighbor had concerns about possible loss if the wall was constructed. That concludes my presentation. As mentioned, item B does not have a recommendation motion at this time. This is only a presentation and information.
Are there any questions from members of the Board of our planner? Questions? For those of you online, any of you have any questions?
No, no questions.
All right, thank you. Okay, at this point then, would the applicant like to address?
I do have. And I'll keep the. We did meet last month and I shared a little bit about the history of the property and what we're trying to do there. And so tonight, we just focus on that rear wall. The first page of the packet that I shared with you, we already discussed last time, just about the community, the fact that we had discussed the wall with our neighbors, both on the rear side of the property and on both sides of the property, and they were supported and supportive and actually had expected and hoped that there would be a wall built there. And so tonight, what I wanted to concentrate on is, I do understand that for a variance that there we would focus in on the things that are different or unique about the property that may cause some challenges, like the enjoyment of the property. And in this particular case, the house, oh, and hi, I'm Michelle Rojas. I'm Joshua Rojas's mother. There was a typo on the slide. He is the owner. He knows why for the owners of the property. We're gonna say hello. So, that, this particular property sits directly in front of a cul-de-sac in the back. So every time a car drives down that cul-de-sac, it shines into the whole backyard and it shines into the house. The backside of the house, the remodel has a large 14-foot sliding door on it, and it definitely shines up the that area when cars drive down the cul-de-sac. So I did take some photos last night. My husband and I went out there and took some photos. And what you can tell from the photos is the first set of photos is where, as if a car was right at the end of the cul-de-sac, like towards the property. And from right at the property line, 30 feet in, and even all the way up to the house, it's a considerable amount of light coming in to the property. And then the second set of photos we took was if a car was down the street, on that same street. And again, it's actually interesting, interestingly worse when a car is driving down the street because they're facing directly into the property versus making a turn. So, so we just took some photos there. Those, that was my car. It's a small SUV. Those are not high beam lights. Those are the regular lights. And so it is a concern. And one of the five or six reasons that we would like to build a solid block wall back there.
Are there any questions from the Board for the applicant?
Yeah, I mean, I kind of was focusing on the kind of the previous overlay of zoning on top of an existing previously built and how it doesn't, it's not consistent along the same other properties. So that's kind of where we were a long time ago with other projects that we've given variances to, is where a zoning has overlaid what has existed before and created a hardship on the owner. So that's kind of where we've been throughout my time on the Board.
Yeah, I guess actually I would like to ask, so there was a letter that was concerned about maybe, I think, maybe the eucalyptus trees or something coming down. So do you have any response to that?
Our plan is to leave the eucalyptus trees in place. However, I will share that one of them did not look good when we purchased the property. So that full back of the property has been without water. It's been hand-watered. And so that has affected some of the trees back there. And in addition, I did have an arborist come out and assess all of the trees on the property. And there is one of those trees that is, has the fungus. So we're trying to save it, but I don't know if we can. So they do provide nice shade. The wall is planned to be built just on the outside of those trees, so they are on the property. But for me to say today, like, I promise those will be here 20 years from now or 10 years from now, I can't say. But the plan is to build the wall outside of them and to maintain them because they do provide good shade. And if they're healthy, they're beautiful, but they're struggling a little bit. Okay.
Do the, any of the Board members online have questions for the applicant?
No, I think she answered any question I had in my mind. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, well, we had, we had a member who wished to speak. Or at least, there was one, there was one written written comment from someone. Is that person here today? No?
Chair, I have not heard from this person since their initial email to us on August 19th. I did respond to them, but I have not heard since.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move on. Just want to make sure we don't overlook. Are there any other, were there any other requests to speak?
Chair, we have not received any requests to speak.
Okay, well, at this point, unless one of our members has a question, I would say it would be appropriate to close the hearing and then move on to talking about action.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so we'll now, we'll now move into general discussion. Do any of the Board members have comments that they want to discuss with the board?
The comment that I want to make is just overlaying existing properties with so many stuff.
Well, I guess just for the record, I would note that based on discussion that we had actually last month at the DOB, you know, it has been noted that a lot of properties back there have, you know, exhibited the need to have something higher maybe than the original zoning defense. So in my mind, I think in this case, the zoning code maybe has not caught up with the needs of the plot. So that's why I feel comfortable supporting this package. As well as, there is that condition of the cul-de-sac pointing in, which I think is a condition that they did not create, so. That's my thinking.
Any other, any other Board comments? Mr. Derry, do you have any, any comments?
No, you've answered them and I'm ready to vote when you guys decide you want to vote.
Well, I'll just make a quick, a quick comment over the years. I live in the vicinity of that trail, so I've walked up the path before. There are some houses there that, you know, are different situations, but I'm not overly thrilled with those, but it's, you know, it's there, right? And there was a concern by somebody about, you know, what was going to happen to these trees. And over, over the years, I've been to a number of these where people have appeared to oppose. I remember one another community where they were very equestrian. This lady came up and complained that if the project went through, it was gonna block her view of the mountain. The workers were riding their horses. I have to tell her, so you've been riding trespassing with your horses over the neighbor's property. You don't have a, you know, a right to, you gotta, you gotta buy all the way to the mountains if you, you know, you want to do that. So in any event, there also are some, you know, houses around that have very large old trees that maybe aren't so great where the owner, you know, the next one over might be thrilled to have it gone. But again, they have no control over the, you know, what the neighbors are doing with their landscaping. Other than in the very beginning, when we get a new, the only time we really can talk about it is when there's a new house or a new thing. And then, you know, we can certainly talk about the landscaping. Okay, well, I don't have any further, further comments. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the variance as submitted.
Second.
Okay, and that that, I recommend to approve. Staff also want to make it known that property is exempt from the requirements of Section 30.02b2. And also, I'm assuming the motion includes reference to the four stipulations that the state has, that, you know, everything has been done, and there's nothing there that's going to impact any of the, any of the neighbors. So with that, we have a motion. Is there a second to the motion?
A second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor of approving the variance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There's no opposed, so it passes. Thank you. Okay, now, let's see. That may be the end of mine. It is. At this point, due to the way that these things are laid out, I'm gonna surrender to Chairman Tarnetsky, the design review board of this.
Chair, if we could just do a formal adjournment of the Board of Adjustment.
I'm moving to adjourn. A second.
A motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none? Okay, now I will surrender to.
Are y'all ready to proceed to the next meeting? Okay, we'll go ahead and call to order this meeting of the Design Review Board for the City of Litchfield Park. It's okay to forego the pledge, because since we just did it.
Sure.
Or is it just for the recording? Yeah.
We should go through.
Okay, so please rise if you can and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, ever and just as well.
Before we start on our items of business, there's a call to the community for anyone who wishes to address this Board on anything that's not on the agenda tonight. Are there any requests to speak, or does anyone here have something to speak about that's not on the agenda? Okay, thank you. So, response call, that's just if someone did say.
Chair, is this correct?
Okay, so first item of business, a approval of the minutes.
Move, we approve the minutes.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for the August 1st, 2024 regular meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or corrections? Okay, the minutes are approved. Item B, garage and casita addition at 612 North La Loma Avenue. And we'll have the, our city banner present it, and then we'll have the applicant add to the information if necessary.
Chair, members of the Design Review Board, good evening. Ready to introduce myself to the Board of Adjustment meeting? The applicant for you is Lydia Reyes and Julie Perry, sitting right up to the second row. This is a request to build a 985 square foot garage and casita addition to the house located at 612 North La Loma Avenue. The zoning of this area is R115. If this request sounds familiar, you've seen it before in a smaller version through internal discussions with the homeowner and architect. This is essentially a redo of that previous approval and a much bigger scale. Here's the house. It backs up to New Litchfield Road, as we call it. The posed floor plan is there on the right. I'll do a little camera trickery so we can see how this all looks before and after. The proposal, and I'll highlight further for you there in red, is right at that 15-foot building setback line. They are using the totality of the area that they can. They're still well underneath their maximum block as well. So you can see there on the right-hand side, there is a, let's call it a three-and-a-half-car garage or so. And the casitas there are just further west, in this case, to the left, on the left image, or to the top on the right image. The depiction of the site, it does match substantially to the house itself. Again, this is more or less what you've seen previously, just again, a little bit further deep as there was on the lot. Our analysis is very straightforward in this regard. The R115 setbacks have been met on this proposal of the addition. Section 39 of the zoning code outlines the design requirements, which this proposal has met. And again, will be reviewed for conformance once the building plans have been submitted. And lastly, on this case, there have been no public comments received. Our recommendation for you is to approve this proposal subject to the exhibits provided by the applicant as part of your packet this evening. The stipulations 1 through 3, I'll read for you. One, a building permit issued by the city will be required before any construction due to occur. You will always see this stipulation as is somewhat straightforward. This is often forgotten, as this is a bit of a two-parter. The planning application for you this evening is part one. The actual construction plans are part two. So we do like to always include this as a reminder. Number two, provide floodwater retention for pre versus post with the building permit. Very similar once more, just to make sure that streets are not flooded with a change in the permeable surface with new structures. And number three, provide roof rock depiction to retention basis with the building permit. Because there is a parapet roof, we want to make sure that we do not create a rooftop pool in this situation. With that, I will take any questions. Otherwise, the applicant and owner are here for you as well.
The applicant like to present any additional information? Could you put the elevations back first, please? It's just basically similar to what we saw before, just expanding.
Yes, my name is Lydia Reyes, and yeah, we did this before, but we expanded a little bit to add the little studio on the back. So that create the provision again for the board. So we keep the same elevation, so everything will match in this going to continuation of existing, so. That's what we wanted to do. And then we received the stipulation, so we are working on it so we can have the retention area, and then everything is ready to go back to the building for review.
Okay. Any questions for applicants for the, or the Board for the applicant or planning staff? Any questions? Did someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the package with the recommended stipulations for the casita, garage and casita addition at 612 North La Loma Avenue.
So.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Board members online?
The only, the only comment is it's a very nicely designed improvement to make all that fit and still meet all our requirements. So I'm definitely in favor of it.
Thank you. Justin? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
I think that's unanimous. Thank you. Okay. It's approved. The next step is approval of approval of accessory structure at 4578 North Village Parkway. And again, we'll follow the same process, our planner will present, and then we'll get extra information.
Chair, good evening. What's more, this is item 5C, titled "The Approval of Accessory Structure." Yep, and it's my conference owner, Bill Richards. This is a 461 square foot accessory dwelling unit, or ADU, at 4578 North Village Parkway in the Village of Litchfield Park. The zoning is R16PD. PD stands for Plan Development. That is, again, the Village of Litchfield Park through Amendment 6. This request would add the ADU in the rear yard within the required setbacks outlined by code. First, we'll go through the descriptions. Here's a look at sites on the west side of the main drag, known as Village Parkway, that just down the road, per se. The exhibit here, I'll highlight once again with a little camera trickery, is located right there at the northwest corner of the site, or the rear corner of the area. Hopefully, the garden is replaced somewhere else. It looked nice. Here's a look at the proposed elevations. These are, I would say exact, I wouldn't say substantially conformant, I would say exact conformance to the house itself as far as the tile choices, pitch roof, stack stone elements. This is essentially a smaller version of the primary dwelling. Our analysis is, as Paul's, accessory structures are discussed and regulated through Section 31 of the zoning code, we have a step-back setback. I practiced all day, did not mess that one up. For every foot above 10 feet, because the ADU is 13 feet in height, you need one additional foot of setback for every foot above 10. So in this case, my math tells me that the five-foot setback is increased to eight. And this proposal does meet that modified setback due to the step-back. Once more, Section 39 of the zoning code outlines the designer review requirements, which this is verbatim of the principal structure. And on this one, we have received no public comments. Our request for you, good evening, is to recommend approval of this site, subject to the exhibits provided in the applicant as part of your packet. The stipulations 1 through 4, once again, I will read for you. One, a building permit issued by the city is required before any construction due to occur. Two, accessory structure shall not have any permanent provisions for cooking. That is a zoning code and building code requirement, both. Three, provide floodwater retention for pre versus post with the building permit. And four, the finished floor elevation shall be a minimum four inches above the principal structure finished floor of the house. These are strangely specific for a design review request, but these are things that we want to make sure that the applicant is very much aware of as they move into the construction drawings phase. With that, I'll take any questions. Otherwise, the applicant is.
There is an active HOA in that neighborhood. Is that, is the approval been, has approval been sought and received?
Yes, client submitted an HOA.
Okay, and then you need to submit that letter to the city?
So, Chair Tarnetsky, my knowledge, a private covenant CCNRs between homeowner and resident has no bearing on this body or city requirements. So on an HOA, yes, they, a HOA typically asks for the city's approval. But in the inverse of that, the city does not require nor can ask of the applicant to provide any sort of HOA approval that is by your discretion.
It used to be requested by, before a building permit would be issued. That's, at least that was my experience.
Sure, Chair Tarnetsky, I would, my lawyer's not present with me this evening, but I would, I would assume that would be an overreach by city standards, but since the point is moved that the applicant has received it, we're okay in that regard.
Okay, okay. That's interesting. Okay. Any questions for staff or applicant? And do you have anything you ought to add? Any questions for staff or applicant and do you have anything you ought to add? Okay.
Yes, I have a question.
Hey, go ahead.
Okay, the four inch lift of the finished floor for the new addition over the existing house. Curious as to why that requirement?
Sure, Chair Commissioner Jerry, I am not a building official, so I, I couldn't speak eloquently about that request. I, all I can tell you is that request was very specific in nature, I don't know if the applicant has more information about why that was requested. But that is not one I would want to stray or alter at this time without speaking through engineering or building in that regard.
Assuming it's having to do with drainage, that if it's below the house level, then it's gonna get flooded.
There, there is a significant incline of the pitch of that block, that back corner, so it's it's more than four inches above, you don't want to even just be in around the finished area. Four inches above that would be well over that four inches, they'd be requiring.
Looks like in the keynotes, it's in there anyway, the slab is, is four inches concrete on grade, right? So I think, I think it's already actually covered in the drawings, it's my interpretation, anyway.
Okay. Um, any other questions? No, would someone like to pose a motion?
I'll propose that we approve the package subject to the stipulations noted by the city and the drawing submitted for four, five, seven, eight North Village Parkway.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries them, thanks. Alright, um, the next is a I D Lolloma Resident Gathering Space at one four one, one four one zero zero South Danny Boulevard.
Chair, good evening, yes, item five D is on the Lolloma campus, item E that follows a separate motion and separate presentation are both within the Sun Health Campus, the first presentation and item is the Resident Gathering Space. It anticipated to be a five thousand square foot building and outdoor event space located on their campus. The zoning is P F P D, which extended means public facilities, Plan Development is part of the Sun Health Campus. The request would add a new building for the residential use, this is open to public access for the residents. There, if you've there's a lot of things going on in Sun Health Campus, I don't want this to be confused with the community center, this is a separate request for you this evening. There are requirements for community center that are of yet to come, just for the record clarification, I want to make sure that it's understood that it's not that. The site is located at the top of the image, there's an arrow pointing to it, I did not do the camera trickery on this one, so you'll have to notate the colored image there and the grass, it's just the left. This is, I would say centrally located on campus as is today, but certainly this campus will be growing until we're all retired. Here's a look at again, a bottom image is again from above, you'll notice trellis featured on the south side. The event space is to the west, this is anticipated to be heavy vegetation and then a slight sidewalk rerouting there against the central plan, we do appreciate the windows are mostly on the north side of the building and that reduces the solar exposure there on the south side, which is the top portion of the image and the west side as well. It's just the windows located at the doors that are leading out to that space. See if I can point right here. Again, once more, north elevation with the windows generally in the shade most of the year. South elevation very limited on exposures, which we appreciate is same on the west east side. You know, it's, it's red tile roof, stack stone elements, it's desert tones that all match that Lolloma campus. And then last image here, it's just the landscape plan that's being proposed as far as the improvements. Our analysis is the proposed improvement does provide the needed amenity and does blend in architecturally and certainly ties right into the site on the existing parking lot. Section thirty nine of the code outlines the design requirements, which this proposal has met and we have not received any public comments on this proposal. Our request is subject to the exhibits provided by the applicant, stipulations one through five, it's requested to approve. And I'll read the recommendation stipulations. One, if applicable, a use permit will be submitted and approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission prior to building permit application acceptance. I want to pause here because until today, we hadn't had a chance to talk to the applicant. Until today, we were not sure of the construction type and building materials that were being proposed. Our code requires manufactured structures to obtain a use permit. However, this is not a manufactured structure, the only ones that I can think of here in the city are at St. Peters, they're clustering buildings. We have one for our Building and Public Works Department, you'll notice always that they have the pack and it's subject to height approval and state approvals instead, this is not that situation. Until we knew that today, we had this stipulation in place, so we wanted to include this to the language if applicable. Essentially, you can still approve as stated one through five, number one is essentially bunk in this situation. Number two, all requirements of the Plan Development, zoning and development agreement remain in force, as mentioned earlier, there's community center that's anticipated. This isn't a, a detraction from those requirements, anything listed within those documents is still applicable and required. Three, a waterline for fire service will be required for the city to go to your standards. Goodyear is our fire service provider, in case there's any clarification needed on that. Four, engineering department permit will be required for creative drainage changes, there is an existing swale of sorts in the rear of the site. We want to make sure as we, you know, as not we, excuse me, as they pour the foundation, I won't be out there with you. As they pour the foundation and construct this building, that we do not negatively affect any sort of drainage requirements that are there today. Five, usually you see this first building permit issued by the city will be required before any construction is to occur. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, the applicant and architect are here as well.
The applicant like to present quickly, go through your design and I guess, just present how you would like it.
Just give you some background on the
Yeah.
Sure.
Good evening, my name is Rich Newman, I'm a consultant for Sun Health, thank you for the time this evening, just to kind of give you the, the background on the structure. The, the residents of Sun Health currently do not have a gathering space that can satisfy just larger groups. They have like a cafeteria area, but no place to do any sort of theater productions, speaking events, dances, anything of the sort. The two other Sun Health campuses have that functionality. This is geared just towards the residents, the site that was selected is ideal in the sense that it's walkable and it's near existing utilities, it's serviceable by the existing staff and it's kind of a throwaway parcel that really was being underutilized, what's nice about it too is the way it's positioned, it will have, you know, as Randy mentioned, a lot of glass on north. So they'll have views of the hilltop, so you know, we're excited about how this kind of satisfies the functional need and aesthetically, it's going to be, you know, an improvement because it's basically sitting next to our facilities building right there, so there's a lot of positives here, the space itself is very flexible, it's a big open space that can be set up for multiple types of events. We're working internally right now for different types of layouts, we're excited to have the opportunity to go forward with this and let me pause there and just ask if you have any questions.
I'm assuming there's bathrooms all et cetera, the kitchen or anything like that or just open space?
It's, it's open space except for the restroom, so no kitchen facilities, the bathrooms we build per the A three use occupancy, I believe, which is gathering. So I think that's going to end up with three or four toilets for the men and for the women each. Other than that, the intent would be if there was any sort of food service, they'd be wheeled over on carts and dollars. And then the, the space is essentially being kept open, we do have that overflow space to the exterior as well. So again, it's intended to satisfy a variety of different functional needs, as Randy indicated, is not replacing the community center, which will be a broader functionality serving more of the community and be more centrally located to the east of this area. This is just servicing the existing Lolloma residents.
Um, I, I guess I assume also that there will be no signage or sight lighting in particular, other than maybe landscape lighting, is that?
Um, we, I'm sure we'll have some landscape lighting, at this point, we've laid out some kind of conceptual landscape layouts, you know, we have the trees that were remaining the, the turf area to the west, as you approach the building, I'm sure we'll have safety lighting, but we're not anticipating anything that would be objectionable, you know, in terms of like dark sky type of stuff, so it's going to be basically functional lighting. In terms of signage, probably minimal signage, just on the, the doors and the structure, again, it's an internal structure, so we're not trying to bring in, you know, anybody from outside. So I don't think the signage will be hugely required.
Okay, and then just one other question, I, it says on the elevations, it depicts kind of a color for the solid panels. Is that true to what the, the intent is or is that, has that been selected?
Yeah, the, the orchards project that is just to the west, we're mimicking that, so it'll be the red tile, like roof alignment, the stucco color on the orchards will be reflected here on these panels, the same kind of veneer stone, which, sorry, I don't know exactly what the stone was on the orchard, but it's intended to look like it belongs there and it's always been there, so we're going to be tying to the existing color palette. And similarly, I don't think we've gotten into a lighting plan for the landscaping, but just to touch on the landscaping, same concept, we're going to take a look at what the, the orchards has in place, we're using the same landscape architect repicket and we'll just be mimicking and reflecting that, you know, appropriate scale wise and locations at this new Resident Gathering Space.
Will you put the site then up for us?
Chair, was it someone or the elevation?
Yeah, that's fine, any questions? Do you want to see it in the broader context of the, of the development?
Uh, no, that's fine, I just wanted to, I just, you know, a lot of times when we're approving like materials and colors, and so I just wanted to make sure that that color was actually not just a placeholder.
Right, if, if I may, just I'll walk over here and point out, but you can see uh, can you, yeah, stay there for a second please?
So these are the orchard structures here, this is the main campus, so we are wedged right between those and we're just going to be reflecting those same materials. And then Randy mentioned the gradient drainage requirement, which is one of the class tips. We expected that because there is an existence swell here that takes some water off the hill and so we're going to need to make some adjustments here just to make sure that there's no channel, so we anticipated that, we're happy to provide that.
So, and this, this north is down now because the, the window wall was with where the trellis is, right?
The primary blast space is going to be on that north edge looking
Okay.
That direction, this side here, so that will be facing north, so that if you're in the structure, we built out the
And then the trellis structure is on the south side then?
Correct, the trellis structure will be here on the south side and kind of break that up right with the mask, give it a little bit more articulation. Uh, so the trellis is kept off this elevation just for clarity.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Dare or, or Sir James? Any questions? Are we approving separately D and B or is it?
Chair Tronetski, yes.
Okay.
Very separate items, so this motion would only be for item five.
Okay, and just to clarify, the applicant, the landscaping is pretty much going to be similar to what's already occurring at the Orchard Development. Any questions? And so I guess we'll, we'll take item D first for the so is this a modular building?
It's only modular in the sense that it comes to change.
Sorry, it's, it's modular in the sense that the building comes in five meter modules, so this ends up being three modules wide and six long, so it's only a spatial call, there's nothing that's modular about it, it's, it's going to be your standard cast ported place concrete slab, a steel structure, typical lowy spread glass, you know, wall panels, stuck, you know, veneer stone. So it's all conventionally built, but we used modular, I think, in one of our, in the narrative, referencing the sizing. Because if we wanted to expand it, for example, if we felt, you know, and we're not planning that right now, but when we were first talking about it internally, we were wondering if we needed another bay, which would be one by three modules, so that's, that's kind of, kind of that language got placed in there.
So it's designed on a grid, but yeah, not built in a factory.
Correct.
Okay.
Exactly.
Okay. There's no questions, can I have a motion?
I, I move that we accept the staff recommendation to approve the proposal subject to the exhibits provided by applicant, stipulations one through five.
Okay.
A second.
Have a motion, a second, to approve the Lolloma Resident Gathering Space at one four one zero zero South Danny Boulevard, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And any nays? No, okay. Then, for the same situation for the landscaping improvements for the same property?
Chair, I will have a full presentation on item five. I have a full presentation.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you, so item five E Lolloma, once more, landscaped improvements, the same applicant team here on behalf of Sun Health. This is not one that we usually see D or B. However, it is within your purview and our requirements that we do present this sort of landscape package for offsite improvements. For the, this instance, it's along Litchfield Road, Camelback Road and a proposed internal loop road within the Sun Health campus. Oh, I apologize, going backwards and so forth. So these offsites are along the Sun Health frontage that's generally from Litchfield Road to Village Parkway along Camelback and along Camelback Road to Montebello essentially to the north. It's not a very good demarcation of where Sun Health ends and City of Glendale begins, but it's north of Missouri's lane. Now, this proposal also includes an internal loop road that is essentially connecting Missouri and Tenny together. And the request for you this evening is to look at these proposed landscape improvements, specifically the offsites, but as part of the package, the onsites are included in this regard. This is a look at the overall site, our hilltop is highlighted in red that the city has ownership of. The loop road has been carefully doodled to the best of my ability to show essentially where it is. Where, how that all be, the other things you'll notice here are posed roundabouts. The roundabouts and the striping, median breaks, those aren't for discussion this evening, this is a work in progress and will continue to be a work in progress because there's a number of players involved in this and requirements for the D A and P D overlay that really are going to govern what this final design looks like. There are essentially palettes provided in your landscape packet for each one of the roadways, the three of which you can see here, Camelback, Litchfield and the loop road, generally, they are consistent in those, the one on Litchfield has palms. Certainly, that is the intent to carry that thematic element through the city. Camelback and the loop road have slightly different versions of the same sort of palette. As far as our analysis goes, again, this is a unique one there isn't a building in this regard, however. These proposed improvements do potentially blend in with Litchfield Park palette. There is one, Thornless Mesquite, we are not going to support and as part of our recommendations for you this evening. Instead, our recommendation for you is either Molder or Swan Hill Olive, the applicant has reviewed this and will take that feedback and adjust the palettes accordingly. We are somewhat premature in all this, however, we do want to make sure that we do. Have this presentation for you as again, a lot of moving parts here. And we want to make sure that when we are ready to go to civil improvements and construction, we are on the up and up. And go through this body for this first level of approval. And we have not received any public comments on this proposal. Recommendation for you is to approve, subject to exhibits provided by the applicant, stipulations one through four. Again, please note that the exhibits show paving and roadway design that's not in the purview for you this evening, nor is part of this motion. I'll read the stipulations. One, thornless mesquite to replace with either Mulga acacia or Swan Hill Olive from the proposed plant palette. Those that may be thinking Olive is wrong, that is the correct type and the one that we do allow as far as any sort of pollinators or fruiting concerns. Two, all requirements of the plan development zoning and development agreement remain in force. Three, streets must meet the requirements twenty eighteen IFC International Fire Code. Penix D for the considerations of fire apparatus access road or meet the requirements of the city of Goodyear standard street section. Design cross section widths. Again, this is something that we are trying to get ahead of as the applicant works through those construction drawings. We want to make sure that we can provide as much information upfront for future success. Four, and this is from our engineer, design review board approval does not constitute a full engineering review. I've talked through this a bit more analysis of the proposed roadway design. Additional coordination and engineering permits will be required for offsite roadway construction. A bit worried, but we do want to make sure that the applicant is aware of these considerations and stipulations at this time as early as possible. So we can, again, be successful in the future. With that, I'll take any questions and the applicants here as well.
Okay, so basically, we're just approving a plant palette that's something that's going to be planted on. Along Litchfield Road when you do your improvements for the loop road, is that correct?
Chair, I see, yes, it's for Litchfield Road, Camelback Road and the internal loop. And normally, we would see landscape pallets as part of a construction or a building. In this case, we're putting the, not we, excuse me again, I don't. The applicant is essentially getting ahead of future improvements to Sun Health campus by getting the infrastructure in place now. It is a bit of an oddity, we talked internally as staff, just to make sure that we were going through the appropriate channels. And we felt that it was appropriate to bring this landscaping only presentation and application to you this evening.
That's I don't think I've ever approved a landscape plan without a site plan, so it's kind of strange. If we're just, if we're limiting our approval to the plant palette, I have no, no problem with that, but it's like. It's hard to approve a landscape plan without. For plan, it says.
I have a question, is the formless mesquite just something that's not allowed in the standard city palette? Or why is that recommended?
Sure, sure, Chair Schronski, board member Dudley. Our, and this is coming up at the staff court update, our code is lacking. And it was part of my report for you this evening, the applicant had reached out to ask quantities. Our code does not list minimal quantities for planting requirements, which is a very, very odd thing. As we are unable to provide clear direction or ensure consistency across the board. So as of today, thornless mesquite isn't called out as a prohibited one, but due to ongoing concerns of litter and limb breakage. It is one that we do not feel confident in ongoing maturity.
Yeah, please pull up the the site or what we're, this is close to the back.
So Chair Schronski, once more, you can see the Sun Health. Edge is just west of Village Parkway there and then the south for the bottom left hand corner of the screen, let's call it. Their improvements along their frontage are from there to Litchfield Road or the section of Camelback Road. And actually off screen from Camelback Road north to about, let's call it Montebello alignment. I've just shown the loop road, however, the Sun Health property and their frontage extends a little off screen there.
Um, any other comments? Yep. Okay, um. So the this approval is for the improvements around the new building and then also. For this, are they separate?
Sure, yes, thank you, Chair Schronski for clarifying. So and your previous motion in item five D landscaping for that building was part of your motion and in this case approval. This is not in regards to the building. This is only in regards to the large loop road that was depicted that is slightly adjacent, but not connected to that. You'll notice, and I'll try and, excuse me, I'll try and point. You notice here at Danny. This in the darker gray, I'll scroll with my mouse here, is the proposed internal loop road. The other item that you've heard this evening is approximately right here and I'll circle that with the mouse. So once more, this is essentially the landscape palace, as mentioned, for the offsites on Camelback, Litchfield and the internal loop road. We are optimistic that the source of improvements, especially the internal loop road, mean we'll be back before you again with additional structures and improvements onsite. But I don't want to speak for the applicant in that regard.
Okay, yeah, please.
Thanks.
Yes.
Um, okay, so to try to give some some backstory and try to explain why this feels a little bit, maybe I have a sequence. There are a series of infrastructure requirements that Sun Health agreed to when the development agreement was done with the city in October of twenty. And we recognize that it's going to take time to get through all of the different processes with the city from the, you know, DRB, P and Z, town council. And then all of these drawing submittals for construction documents. Once we map that out and then we think about the construction time, we realized we're looking twenty to twenty four months before we're going to be done with these things. And we recognize with everything that you folks have planned on the hilltop, plus some of the other things that we'd like to do, unlike the southeast agri commercial piece. It just makes sense to get this process started now. So the idea is that we wanted to get the ball rolling. We are currently working with the team at the city to make sure that we have. What's the right word? Uh, just work sessions, just kind of understanding beyond what the standard requirements are from the county or the development agreement, you know, road sections. They're kind of like, this is what you have to do, turn radii, that's that's all set engineering standards. But there are aspects such as the landscape that we want to make sure that we're meeting your expectations. So for example, I'm speaking with, I think it was Keith, a few weeks ago, I went and I took pictures of the roundabout that you folks just completed. And I sent that to our landscape team so they can see species, quantities, location, sizes, all of those sorts of things. So we're trying to work to make sure that we're meeting again the city's expectations. But we really just wanted to get the process rolling and this was the first step. So, you know, we're talking about everything on Camelback Road, everything up on Litchfield Road, that loop. And then there's two small segments. Here and here, those those are the the five separate sub projects. We're working them all through together simultaneously right now. Uh, we know that Litchfield Road as the hilltop continues to evolve with the different players that you have, that's going to adjust. So we can't quite finish that segment because we're not sure exactly where the roundabout will be, for example. So we're going to push forward on the ones we can. We just, we we really want to get this thing moving and this doesn't really affect your decision. But just so you know, Sun Health's board has approved us, we are good to go on our end to get these drawings done. So we are, this isn't like a theoretical, someday we're going to do it, we're going. So we're excited and we know that that having these. Uh, this infrastructure done on the two main streets and then the interior, that's going to allow us to further develop some of the other components that we've been thinking about for years. So it's a it's a big milestone for us and I'll I'll just say appreciate again the opportunity to kind of give the broader background on that one. And I'll pause, see if there's any other questions.
Thank you. Um, any questions, members on, board members online?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay. I'll let one of you come up with some motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the landscaping improvements to Sun Health along the campus. So at the northwest corner of Litchfield and Camelback, subject to the exhibits provided and the stipulations that the city made.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. That was an aye, right? Okay, here.
Yes.
Okay, all right, that's that motion carries. That's good, so next up is staff for the current events.
Chair Schronics, members of the survey review board. A couple of things, next week, the planning zoning commission, we will have a work study session on our sign code. If you need something to do, want to tune in, I'd highly recommend that you do it. We have a number of shortcomings and a number of different sections, especially landscaping. The sign code is in need of immediate rectifying, quite frankly, so that's our first step next week. On the screen to the right there is a software called iWork. iWork is something that our code enforcement and our public works uses. There has never been an online or software repository of the cases that we bring in and present to you. I have completed all the twenty twenty four cases into this system so that we can start. Uh, tracking them better, seeing how long that they're with us, how long it takes to get to an approval status. There's all sorts of wonderful built in features. I now just have to go from twenty twenty three through nineteen eighty seven to find the rest of the file somewhere. Your last item before you that is shown is.
I'd be interested in how many actually built it as we approved. Sometimes things go by your way.
Uh, I'll pull up another image here and we'll go back to the presentation after. I have been working through all twenty eight hundred or so residential properties in the city. We have provided this information to iWorks that essentially when you look up a property, it tells you the land use category, the general plan, tells you the zoning district. And soon it will give you the setbacks. One of the hardest things that we have as staff to do is find the right document with the right requirements in order to. Assist people with their ADUs or enforce codes appropriately. As mentioned, Village at Litchfield Park has gone through six amendments. There is no final document that outlines all of those requirements. So this is a work in progress. The last bit of update I will tell you, it's that on Thursday, September nineteenth, city council is holding a special meeting, not on Wednesday, but this time on Thursday at St. Peters. It should be. Important, I'll say, as it is discussing the library, American County Library District, IGA, intergovernmental agreement, among the other things, as part of their. Combined special and regular meeting on Thursday, the nineteenth. That is it for my report.
Do any board members have any current events? Okay, uh, motion to adjourn?
So.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm only here to, I think he raises. Thank you, we're adjourned.